Welcome to the August 7th, 2017 Troy City Council Meeting. We are pleased this evening to have Councilman Baker lead us with the invocation. So please stand for that and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father in heaven, we give you thanks for this beautiful day and thank you for all the blessings you've given each and every one of us here in Troy. We ask that you continue to bless us this evening through our council meeting as we meet to discuss the important issues facing our city, representing diversity of thought and profession and background, but coming together as one body to do its best for the city and for its residents. We ask that you be with those who are in need in our city and throughout the world, who may not have the power and strength to ask for your help, but knowing that you can help them in ways that many don't understand. Please be with us all, keep us all safe, guide us and protect us. In his name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Baker. Troy City Council Meeting is now called to order. The roll call, Ms. Dixon?
Mayor Slater?
Here.
Councilmember Abraham?
Here.
Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Henderson?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Hoderek?
Here.
Councilmember McCown?
Here.
Councilmember Pennington?
Here.
All present, first on the agenda are certificates of recognition and special presentations. We have two this evening. C1 is a presentation on behalf of the City of Troy Employees Casual for Cause Program for the months of May and June 2017. Community Affairs Director Cindy Stewart will present a check. Good evening, Cindy.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. It's my pleasure tonight to present a check for the Open Hands Food Pantry of $525. I have here Bruce Donigan as Chairman of the Board and two of his board members Cheryl and Chuck. I didn't get their last name. And I don't know, Bruce might want to say a couple words?
Beehan and Tucker. I thought I'd help you with that, so.
Good evening.
Thank you so much. Open Hands Food Pantry has been active since 1982 and we are located in the lower level of St. John's Episcopal Church on the corner of Woodward and 11 Mile. Through the years, we've, well, we've always served the people of Oakland County and we've expanded to such an extent that we're seeing about 14,000 people a year. It turns out to be the largest food pantry in terms of number of people served in Oakland County and we're proud to be doing that work. We want to thank the people, the citizens of, or the employees of City of Troy for this great donation. We're going to really make good use of it. Thank you for thinking of us as a recipient of this donation and we'll make good use of this serving our clients, our guests who are in need in Oakland County. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, too, in person. C2 is the Barnes and Noble presentation. I'll ask Kathy Russ to come to the podium and unfortunately Donald Kendall can't be with us this evening, but it's always nice to see Kathy. Good evening.
Well, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Slater. Good evening, Council. I'm pleased to be here tonight. Yes, unfortunately Donald Kendall, the Community Relations Manager at Barnes and Noble was unexpectedly called away. So on his behalf, I would like to present myself with this check for $537.60 to the Troy Public Library. This is a result of our wonderful partnership that we have with Barnes and Noble. We had a book fair on July 8th that lasted till July 13th and as a result of the fabulous support from the Troy community, they had, the store had over $4,000 in sales, so they donated a portion of those sales to the tune of $537 to the library. We're going to use it to buy children's materials and teen materials and every little bit helps. So I just really appreciate the partnership with Barnes and Noble, Troy Business, and we have another book fair coming up November 26th, which happily is the day Saturday after Thanksgiving. Hope to see everybody there and thanks again for allowing me to accept this check.
Thank you for accepting. There are no carryover items this evening, so we will move to public hearings. We have two this evening. E1 is a planned unit development application, file number PUD JPLN 2016-0029, which is a proposed, the proposed Troy crossing on the north side of Big Beaver, east of John R. I'm not going to read all of these sections, Brent, if that's okay. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Slater and City Council.
Let me open the public hearing, okay?
So the project is located on the north side, excuse me, north side of Big Beaver, east of John R. You see it indicated here, outlined in red. It's approximately 4.77 acres in area and it is already zoned PUD or Planned Unit Development. It was rezoned to Planned Unit Development in 2007. Now, at the same time that the property was rezoned to PUD in 2007, the project that I'm showing on this, on the screen, was approved. And this project was a mixed-use project and it was approved for two retail buildings fronting on Big Beaver. This is Big Beaver here at the bottom. Those two retail buildings totaled about 16,000 square feet in size. There was also a 3,500 square foot coffee shop and deli with a drive-through located on the east side of the project. And to the north, they were approved for 23 townhomes here that overlooked a relatively large detention basin and water feature. And for various reasons that I'm assuming are related to the recession that followed this up in 2008, this project was never constructed. So the applicant, Brian Nager, from major companies, and Brian is in attendance this evening, submitted an application to revise this Planned Unit Development project. And this is a rendering on the screen here showing what he proposes to do. Proposes two retail buildings on the, on the frontage of Big Beaver, approximately 11,000 square feet in area, and four three-story apartment buildings totaling 96 units. Also, there's a relatively small community center that's proposed, about less than 1,000 square feet. This is a rendering of the two retail buildings. This is, this is what they would look like looking north at the building from Big Beaver. And this is a rendering of one of the apartment buildings. You notice the similarities in design, materials, color. It is an integrated project, so they, it was intended that they'd have some similarities. And the applicant seeks concept development plan approval and preliminary development plan approval at this time, and he seeks those approvals concurrently. So transition, the reason I put up a slide here is because this is really what the focus was, in my interpretation, during the public input process for this project. The public, the planning commission held a public hearing on this item in March of 2017 and at the public hearing, most of the comments that were raised by the public concerned transition, that relationship between the PUD and the residential properties located to the north and to the east. And really was focused on this, this thing right here. These are garage buildings. The applicant proposed a total of three garage buildings, all of them around 20, 20, less 20 or actually, two 13-space garages and one 22-space garage totaling 48 units. And what he proposed, this is obviously looking at the front, this is what you would see looking from the apartments to the garages, obviously the doors are there for access. This is what was proposed, that the neighbors would be looking at from their homes, looking at the garages. It's about 11 feet tall and what he proposed was, was these would help to buffer the property, obviously providing a wall. It's 11 feet tall. And the remainder of that transition area would be comprised of landscaping. So during the public hearing, some neighbors liked the wall, some neighbors thought it was too short, 11 feet, if you can believe that, some wadded wall, so it was back and forth. And after a lot of discussion with the planning commission, it was decided that the best, the best route would be to postpone the item and give Brian an opportunity to meet with the neighbors and talk about the project, get some feedback related to the project in general, but the transition in particular. And to his credit, Brian and his team did that, met with the neighbors, and they came back with a slightly revised plan. Really, the only revision was, the only revisions were related to this transition. And this is the site plan that's in your packet and I added color to it today, I had Stephanie add color to it today, to illustrate what he's proposing. So instead of just garages and landscaping, here's what he proposes. Notice in green, starting at the southeast corner, this is landscaping. These are eight-foot-tall spruce trees. Then the red is an 11-foot-tall garage with, made out of brick. And the blue is a six-foot-high wall made out of brick, similar color and the same material as the garages, so it's, so it looks, it looks good. The garages would be stepped back three feet to allow for maintenance of the building from the backside and the wall would be placed on the property line. So then we go from, again, from wall to garage, wall to garage, and then from garage to landscaping. So you see it's fairly symmetrical, it's actually very symmetrical. And this is what was proposed to the planning commission. Planning commission had another meeting to consider the revised site plan on June 27th, 2017, and they recommended approval of the entire PUD project by an eight-to-zero vote. Subjectism, very minor changes that I won't get into related to the site plan, but those changes were incorporated here this evening. And I would note that the meeting that we held June 27th was not a public hearing. However, given the fact that Brian met with the neighbors, we wanted to inform, make sure all the neighbors, abutting neighbors were informed of the meeting and we sent them all notice in the mail so they could attend the meeting and comment. And no, no neighbors commented on the, on the revised plans, which I think is a testament to the work that went into it by the applicant. So with that being said, Mr. Mayor, City Management recommends approval of the proposed project. This includes concept development plan approval, preliminary development plan approval, and revision of the PUD agreement. I can answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions from Council? Councilman Henderson?
I only noted two things when I went through the packet the other day, and one was the wall, which you've addressed appropriately, and the trash. There was an email from one of the neighbors about trash receptacles. Where are, are those right up against the walls typically, or where, where are those?
I can show you here, Councilman Henderson, right, it's right there.
Okay.
And there, for the resident, for the residential.
Okay.
The, I can show, the commercial ones are internal.
Right.
Here.
Okay. All right.
Councilwoman Abraham?
Whenever we have development, there's always questions about, you know, trees coming down. So can you clarify, you know, how, if this PUD is subject to the tree preservation ordinance or if it's been grandfathered in because it was originally granted in 2007?
With the latter. So this, this was originally granted concept development plan approval in 2007. There are a number of trees on the property, so it's kind of, not, not a legal term, but it's double grandfathered. I just made that term up. There's a concept development plan approval and PUD agreement that, that allows them to develop the project that I showed initially. And the application to revise the project was also submitted prior to the tree, the tree language. So they're, they're, they're under no obligation to, to preserve or to, to meet the tree protection requirements. Very astute observation by you.
I'm anticipating the emails.
Any other questions for Brent from Council? Thank you, Mayor. Brent? I'll call on Linda Thai, Troy resident, wishes to speak on this item. Good evening.
Hi.
Could you bring the microphone down, please? Thank you.
We still need a few more answers to some of our original questions. One was on the drainage system, which we couldn't really find any dimensions in any of the blueprints to let us know how the drainage is going to happen and where it's going to happen. Because all of us that are north of there, we're already underwater. So if they don't have a good drainage system, it's going to be worse. And then we were also wondering about the animal removal. I mean, there was an area of wetlands in there. What, what's going to happen to animals? Is somebody going to remove them or they're just going to chase them off? And the survey, what about the land survey?
Thank you. This is an opportunity for you to, to address the council. We can ask those questions for you, for you once you're done.
And then also, we wanted to comment on the fact that there's absolutely no other three-story structures in the area. I mean, why are they going with three stories? That's going to look over everybody's backyard and into everybody's houses. And it, it just is not going to fit. And then we also wondered about the parking. Is there separate parking for the retail than from the apartments? Because that's a really busy corner as it is. And if it's going to create a traffic issue, it's going to make traffic even worse. And that's about it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak on this item this evening? Brent, did you want to address any of those issues at this point? I was under the impression that the neighbors were somewhat satisfied with this project at this point.
As was I, Mr. Mayor. Again, it was based, a lot was, a lot of it was based on the fact that no one attended the last meeting where all the neighbors that were abutting were informed. I can go through the, the items to the best of my ability. First, the, the first comment I believe was related to drainage and this property, this approval, if approved tonight, would, would get preliminary development plan approval, which is basically equivalent to preliminary site plan review or preliminary site plan approval. The next step would be engineering review. The applicant would submit detailed engineering design plans. Our engineering department would review it, in part to ensure that there would be no negative impact in terms of drainage on abutting properties. It, it cannot impact those, those neighboring properties. The second question was related to relocation of animals. The city does not have a program where we relocate animals. The animals are going to have to find another place to go, just like they did when your homes were built and when, when the residence homes were built, that's unfortunately the way it is. I, I didn't understand a comment about surveys. There is an accurate survey that, that is, was prepared as part of this and it's actually in your agenda packet. The height of the building, I forget the height of the building, but they're relatively low-profile design. You can see from the site plan that there's a pretty significant setback from the property line to the, to the units, especially on the northern units. And this distance from the, the northern units to the, to the wall, then to the units, residential units to the north are, is, they're considerable distances. So the combination of the relatively low profile of the height of the buildings, in combination with the, the transition treatment that is proposed, the planning commission felt that that was a suitable transition and that the height of the building was not going to negatively impact the residential neighbors. Did I miss one of the questions?
Parking.
Parking, thank you. You, you, there's, generally it's designed so that the retail parking parks near the retail uses and the residential parking parks near the residential units. Some of the, some of the parking spaces, obviously with, with the parking garages are dedicated, but there is, there is going to be some overlap and some shared parking. And this is actually done to minimize the number of spaces that are required for the site. It actually helps to, to reduce the amount of impervious pavement on the site and to improve the overall parking situation. And one of the, one of the concerns again was drainage and with less impervious surface, you have less negative impacts of, of stormwater. So hopefully I answered all your questions, all of her questions, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. In the computer, there's, under E1, public hearings, there's a reference to an attachment, topographic survey. I'm wondering if that's what she may be referring to.
It may be. And that, that, that survey is actually referenced in the resolution. That's why it was included.
Right. Councilman Henderson?
Just one question about the retail. I know it says restaurant up there, but are we looking at Kirby-type things or are we looking at a TGI Fridays or, I mean, what sort of establishments?
I would have Mr. Nager comment on that. I don't know.
Thank you. Do you want Mr. Nager to come? Mr. Nager, I know it's preliminary. Do you have a tenant at this point? Could you come to the podium for a second, please? I don't know if it's premature, if you have a tenant for the...
Well, good evening, Mayor Slater and Council. Thank you guys for, for allowing me to, to, you know, to discuss this development. At this time, we, we haven't secured any tenants. It's probably a little bit premature, so we wanted to make sure that we did things and not put the cart before the horse. So at this time, we have an idea of the types of tenants that we would like to put in there. If we were to go with a full-scale restaurant, more like an Applebee's or a Friday's, I think it would be a little bit too exhaustive on the, on the parking situation and it wouldn't really be congruent with the site. So it's probably going to be something more along the lines of a fast casual type restaurant, sandwich shop, coffee shop. And actually, we're looking to do something a little bit more boutique as opposed to, you know, a, a chain. So that's, that's where we're at right now. And we, we obviously want to keep a, a good mix, so we're going to be cognizant of that. We want to keep a good mix of, of retail, restaurant and services with the way things are changing. And I've been involved in a lot of discussion recently regarding retail and the way things are happening online. We're looking at this as being more of a service-based type center that will service surrounding, surrounding homes and residences, things like hair salon, coffee shops and things like that, so. And, and one more note to that is, is part of the reason this development changed so much from what you saw in the beginning, which was already approved, was that, that had an abundance of retail in there. And with the way things have changed over the last few years, for this particular location to absorb 25,000 square feet, which, which is what was, you know, there before, I thought the, the, you know, through speaking with Brent and, and doing some research and market study, that this would be more complimentary and this would be a better strategy going forward to focus a little bit more on the residential and sort of shrink down that retail to be more service-based as opposed to having a ton of retail there and struggling to fill that retail. So that's the direction that we took the project in.
Thank you. Makes sense. Thank you. Any other questions?
And I'm glad that Brent answered those tough questions before, especially the tree thing. Saved me, huh?
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Before I close the public hearing, is there anyone else here who wishes to speak on this item? Close the public hearing, return to the table for resolution. Councilman Baker?
I'd like to move E1, Planned Unit Development Application, file number PUD JPLN 2016-0029, proposed Troy crossing, north side of Big Beaver, east of John R. Parcels 88-20-24-352-024, 025, 026, 027, 028, 041. Section 24, currently zoned PUD 8, Planned Unit Development 8, District as printed.
Support?
By Councilman Baker and supported by Mayor Pro Tem Hoderek, that we approve E1, the Planned Unit Development Application as printed in the agenda packet. Further discussion, Councilman Baker?
Just a quick, I think it's great to see 10 years later, having a project come to fruition, hopefully. And I think it's also really positive for the city to see the residential directly on Big Beaver. I think that goes with the city's overall vision and the fact that it's on Big Beaver on a sizable parcel, I think is very positive for the city moving forward. And I look forward to seeing how things progress.
Councilman Henderson?
I took a minute over the weekend to drive by and get a, a good feel for the, the site and the surrounding neighbors. Oddly enough, there was a deer grazing on the property, so, and I saw that in one of the emails, so. And it, it is unfortunate that progress sometimes moves nature aside, but they do seem to survive somehow. So hopefully we have enough Parkland in Troy to accommodate that.
Sure they'll end up in my backyard.
Eating my flowers.
The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Hoderek?
Yes.
Councilmember McCown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Motion passes. Congratulations. Thanks for choosing Troy. Thank you. Next on the agenda is public comment for items on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. I'll call upon James Savage, Troy resident, wishes to speak on I-5. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. I guess I was expecting the resolution to be read out ahead of time, but nevertheless, the I-5 relates to the Civic Center area. And a few years ago, probably about three or four, you and I think most of the people here were on the council at the time, decided to review the Civic Center site. At that time, I suggested you study and consider the task force plan of 2004. I didn't hear much more about that until about two months ago, when WJR Vady announced, "People of Troy are going to get a new downtown with shopping mall, high-rise buildings, hotel, et cetera." Saying to me, someone let the cat out of the bag because I hadn't heard and people I talked to had never heard anything about it before then. At previous council meetings, I voiced opposition to the plan, my concern being the loss of green space. At subsequent meetings, I repeated my opposition while you continued to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars on your project. All I wanted was to protect our green space. I did not want to start a revolution. I didn't want to start the Civic Center war. Now you try to make the petition the issue and verbally attack the people circulating the petition. They too just wanted to preserve the green space. And I'm going to leave it at that, except that because I've been pretty good time on another issue. As you know, I, I volunteer at the Community Center every month to host a dance and this Thursday is the dance. So I would like to take this opportunity to invite everybody there. It's a social evening. There's good company, there's good music and no politics. You're all welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes those that have signed up to speak, public comment for items on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. Any reply from City Council, City Administration at this point? Mayor Pro Tem Hoderek?
I just want to be clear that when we've had discussions from the table in response to the comments that have been brought to us about the Civic Center and the petition, I in no way am attacking the people and the petition process. I am expressing concern about what the unintended... I am expressing concern about what the unintended consequence of that ballot initiative will be to our charter. So I'm not against the people. Many of them are friends. They're people I've locked arms with in the community on many issues. Mr. Savage himself, I've danced with at his ballroom dancing, and I hope to do it again. But we owe ourselves as a community to have an intelligent, thoughtful, honest conversation when these issues come up. It's democracy in action. So I... None of us is attacking people for participating in the democracy, but we have a responsibility to look after our charter and the long-term impact of this proposed ballot initiative. On the charter, Civic Center aside, and it's a legitimate concern, it's a researched concern, and I hope it can be heard as it's intended to make sure we're doing right by our community, not as personal attacks. And, you know, I just want to make that clear. I'm concerned that this process can make Troy contentious again if we're not careful. And so let's speak with facts. Let's speak the truth of matters. Let's be honest and respectful with one another. We owe that to one another. We don't want to go back to a time where we had a lot of contentiousness. And I certainly hope that when we're being honest with our concerns from our vantage point, that that can be received respectfully and as it's intended.
Any other comments from council at this point? There are no postponed items this evening, so we will move to regular business. Board and committee appointments. I have one mayoral appointment this evening. I would like to appoint Brian, I'm going to butcher his name again, I'm sure, Maio Dzuski, to the Downtown Development Authority for the term that expires 9/30/2019.
Support.
Moved by the chair and supported by Councilman Baker, that we appoint Brian M. to the DDA for the term that expires 9/30/2019. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hoderek?
Yes.
Councilmember McCown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes. Motion passes. Thanks to Brian for stepping up and volunteering to be on one of the more important committees in the city. There are no city council appointments this evening. There are no mayoral nominations or city council nominations this evening. I-3 is a request for closed session, and there is no request this evening. So we will move to I-4, Updated City Manager Employment Agreement with a resolution. Councilman McCollum?
I'd like to move item I-4, Updated City Manager Employment Agreement as printed.
Support.
Is that... Oh.
He beat me by.
Moved by Councilman McCollum and supported by Councilman Pennington, that we approve the Updated City Manager Employment Agreement as printed in the agenda packet this evening. I know we had a closed session this evening, and a lot of the questions were asked and answered at that point. So if there are no further questions, I'll ask for the vote.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hoderek?
Yes.
Councilmember McCown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
No.
Motion passes. Next on the agenda is I-5, The Citizen Initiated Charter Amendment Proposal to Add Section It says introduction by city clerk, but if it's okay, I'll handle this one. I'm going to move I-5 as printed to get it on the table for discussion.
Support.
Moved by the chair, supported by Mayor Protem Hoderek, that we approve I-5, The Citizen Initiated Charter Amendment Proposal to Add Section 12.4 as printed in the agenda Discussion? If I could, I'll start. As we all know, this has been a very contentious proposal that, in some respects, is splitting the city again. There are several irregularities that have happened along the way with this proposal. And before we start the discussion, I'd like to call on City Attorney Bloom to educate the council as to what can be said and what can't be said at this point from the table or by the council, if you could.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, this is a properly... This has actually been verified and is being presented to you for a resolution to put this on the ballot. As such, it is subject to the Campaign Finance Act. So all of you are required to comply with the Campaign Finance Act. And essentially, what that requires is that you not use city resources either in support or in opposition of it. So again, that does not mean that you cannot have an opinion. It does not mean that you can never voice your opinion. You just need to be very cautious about using city resources. It would be a violation of Campaign Finance Act if you were to use city resources either in support or in opposition of this. So just to clarify that, hopefully, you know, and again, as always, I urge you, I'm pretty conservative, so, you know, again, you want to be as conservative as you can be. We, I expect that council will direct us to provide a neutral brochure as to the ballot question. I expect that that will come at a later point in time. Certainly, that is proper for city resources to be used for a neutral educational piece, and that will be coming forward at a later point in time.
Thank you. Any questions for the city? Councilman Baker?
Thank you for that, Lori. Is this a city resource? Can you define city resources? That's my only concern. Is it just financial, or is it the fact that we're up here? Or how does that work?
You can voice your opinions. There are cases that basically say the use of a microphone during a regular meeting, just a regular, you know, regularly scheduled meeting, is not going to amount to a campaign finance violation. However, if you... There are... If it goes to the extremes, then that may be an issue that, you know, could be litigated. So again, as long as it's just expressing your opinion during the normal course of a meeting, then it should be allowed. It should not be a Campaign Finance Act violation.
Any questions? Councilman Henderson?
Attorney Bloom, if we put out a neutral brochure or neutral information piece, can it include information on both sides of the... In other words, if we have information about the other properties that could be affected by this negatively, can that go on a brochure, or is that forbidden?
I would expect that the memorandum that City Manager and I presented to you at the last meeting would be the starting point for the neutral brochure, because again, that's just factual information. It's not opposing or supporting the ballot question. It is providing factual information to the residents.
Thank you. Any other questions from council?
Mayor?
Mayor Protem Hoderek?
From the city, there can only be one mailing of this piece, correct?
No, you could do more than one mailing. However, there are costs to consider for that, and that's council's decision as to what they want to do with the resources of the city.
Okay, I think I got it. If someone calls us tomorrow and asks us our opinion as to whether we support or don't support this proposal, we can give our opinion?
Yes, you can.
Thank you. Thank you for the update. With that information, as I indicated when I started this conversation, there have been many, many irregularities that have come before this council regarding the collection of these signatures. I'm not going to list them at this time, but what does concern me at this point is that there currently is a criminal investigation pertaining to this petition and the signatures. So that information may come to light tomorrow, or it may take a week or more. So I really think it's not fair to this council to have to vote on this tonight, having so many irregularities and questions up in the air at this point. So I'm going to ask if I can get support to table this item at this point. And if I get support to table this item at this point, I have additional resolution. So I'm going to propose that we table this item until further notice at this point.
Support.
Moved by the chair, supported by Councilman McCollum, that we table I-5, The Citizen Initiated Charter Amendment Proposal to Add Section 12.4 as printed in the agenda Any further discussion on... City Attorney Bloom?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. And I just want to let you all know, this is a little unusual. In most cases, the state statute, once the requirements have been satisfied, then there is a requirement that, again, you're not putting, you know, the ballot question, you're not approving the ballot question. What you're doing is translating it into a question, because you can't have a statement on the ballot. And there is a statutory provision that would require you to do that once a petition is received and is valid. There are also some time limits. Unfortunately, this was received at the very last hour, and so this is your last opportunity to vote on that. If you do not vote on that, and I understand that there are difficulties and extenuating circumstances in this particular case, I just wanted to be very clear that the city clerk is also, under a separate statute, obligated to submit language. And so I think by default, the language that she would submit is the language that is in the agenda packet. So I just wanted to make sure that there was an understanding that that will happen if council approves this resolution to postpone.
I'm clear on that, and I'm not opposed to calling a special meeting before that deadline. Councilwoman Abraham?
I think you anticipated my question, which was to Ms. Dixon, when is the drop dead date for submission, and is it possible for us to do a special session to vote on this matter?
So the deadline, according to state election law, is August 15th. I have to submit the question to be placed on the ballot at that point. So, you know, council could call a special meeting theoretically anytime, up until 4 o'clock on the 15th, and still give me time to submit that question to the county.
Any other questions? The vote on the table of this resolution tonight?
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hoderek?
Yes.
Councilmember McCown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Motion passes. I'm going to propose a resolution this evening, and I am certainly open to editing. Resolved that the Troy City Council hereby directs the city administration to request that the State and Michigan Attorney General's Office investigate the circulation of the petitions by the committee named Save the Troy Civic Center.
Support.
Moved by the chair, supported by Councilman McCollum, that we approve the resolution that Detroit City Council hereby directs the city administration to request that the State and Michigan Attorney General's Office investigate the circulation of the petitions by the committee named Save the Troy Civic Center. Discussion? The reason that I am proposing this resolution is because of the irregularities that have surfaced. I've had several citizens approach me about the misrepresentation that they were approached to sign this particular petition. I've been told of other instances where the petition was circulated within city buildings, and there are a few more incidents that have been addressed to me. But the most important part to me is that there is a criminal investigation going right now, and that concerns me. And I can't go into that any further at this point because it is an investigation, but that concerns me. And I think when and if the city clerk sends a letter to the Attorney General's Office and the Governor's Office, that they should be aware that there are irregularities and a criminal investigation going on at this time. So that's my reasoning behind this. Councilwoman Abraham?
I was just wondering if there's any precedent for resolutions from a city council to the state on some matters. I don't know if that question goes to.
City Attorney Bloom?
I guess I can address that. Yes, there have been investigations in the past as to election issues and circulation issues in particular, and there have been circuit court actions many, many years ago, several years ago. So I guess the answer is yes, there have been, you know, there is some precedent as far as sending it to the Attorney General, the Attorney General's Office. It has to be sent to the Attorney General anyways. It certainly is within their purview to monitor election law issues.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Councilman Baker?
I guess, I don't know. I'm hearing what you said. I'm digesting it, which is good. I think I do want to say that support of this for me tonight is in no way in the face of the thousands of people that signed the petition who care greatly about our Civic Center property and who are activists in the city. It's not about those individuals that have cared enough to take a stand. From what I'm hearing, it's more about specific irregularities and the potential for criminal issues, and there's an investigation pending. So I want to focus more on that aspect of it and not as a direct, I guess, assault on the people saying, "We don't care about your petition." It's not that at all for me. I've talked to many of you who've signed those petitions and continue to, and I get it, and I hear your concerns, and I understand that. But for me, as we sit here as a body, if I hear that, you know, there's a criminal investigation pending, I think that needs to be further stated to the Attorney Generals with whatever we're sending to them, and I think that merits our attention on that issue. But again, it's not about the people who care so very much, Mr. Savage included. You spoke tonight, and you've spoken consistently. I think that your points are well-heard and well-understood, and because of you, I've continually looked at the 2004 task report. I mean, I continue to read it every time you come back and tell me to. So I, you know, you are being heard. I'm not going to get into all the other aspects of where we are in this process, but I think that the voices of our citizens are so important, and this isn't about those voices and those people who have taken a stand because they've been told one thing about our Civic Center property. It's more about the technical issues surrounding it.
Well said. Any other comments? My comment to that is that I agree... My comment to that is that I agree with everything you said. Currently, there's a House bill that is being considered in Lansing that addresses improprieties about gaining signatures that's gaining momentum, and it's my intent to, at the next council meeting, to bear in a resolution, asking our representatives to support that House bill. Because I think we need to do something about the way signatures are being collected, not so much by our citizens, but by the professionals that are being hired to collect signatures. I think it's more of an education process with our citizens, and we need to maybe do a better job of educating them. The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Mayor Protem Hoderek?
Yes.
Councilmember McCown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Hopefully, this will be resolved where we can have a special meeting. If not, the city clerk will be obligated to send it, and she can send our resolution along with that. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. Anyone wish to pull a consent agenda item this evening? Councilman Henderson?
I'd like to move all items on the consent agenda as printed.
Support.
Moved by Councilman Henderson, and supported by Councilman McCollin, that we approve all items on the consent agenda as presented in the agenda packet. Discussion? The vote, Ms. Dixon?
Councilmember McCown?
Yes.
Councilmember Pennington?
Yes.
Mayor Slater?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hoderek?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next on the agenda are memorandums and future council agenda items. K one is an announcement for a public hearing. A is August 21st, 2017, the adoption of Brownfield Redevelopment Plan Number Eight for Somerset Plaza, 2830 West Maple Road, north of Maple, east of Coolidge, Section 29. I don't see that anyone has signed up for public comment for items not on the agenda from Troy residents and businesses. There are no council referrals this evening, so we will move to council comments. Would it be okay if I go first again?
Sure.
Thank you. In light of the proposed charter revision, I think this council needs to address whether we want to suspend all Civic Center activities, including revoking the RFQ at this point. I've had some discussions with Matt Farrell and the city manager, and I'd like to call on the city manager at this point to give your opinion. I've been told that there's probably no chance that anyone would submit an RFQ at this point, and could you give me an update on that?
Well, the update is, as you mentioned, Matt Farrell from Core Properties, who's been a consultant on this project, Bob Gibbs, and many other people we've talked to. Not only is it not fair to the developers to fly up here, take staff time to evaluate the proposal and the grounds, but given the state of the issue, I can't imagine who would want to take the time to submit a pretty lengthy proposal and even consider putting money into the ground, given where we're at today. So I'd be hard pressed to talk to anybody that would want to do that at this time. That's not to say in the future something might, but at this time, clearly with what's going on, I can't imagine, and my phone does not ring right now, so.
Councilman McCollin?
My only question with that would be, if we did rescind the RFQ, is there any waiting period, or is there any process that would prevent us from sending it back out later on?
No, there's not. It's actually a very well-written RFQ, and I don't know if Mary Bath is still here, and Mark Miller, and Matt Farrell and their team. It's very well done, and it would definitely be ready to go again.
Councilman Baker?
What are the ramifications of leaving it in? Is it costing us money to have it out there? Or is it just a, I mean, why would we pull it back?
So as I mentioned, the money that it costs us is the resources that we take to meet with the developers that are interested, right? It's one of those where I don't know if it's in our best interest to have an RFQ out there that nobody submits on because of the environment. You know, I'm not coming up with a good analogy right now, but you understand what I'm saying. It's to have nobody come to the prom, I guess, is what I'm thinking.
You got a band, and nobody comes to the dance.
Thank you. That's better than prom.
Mayor Protem Hoderek?
Is it a little bit like putting your house on the market, and it sits too long and becomes stale, and?
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, that's the way developers are going to see it, right? And they're going to hear, they're going to learn, they're going to come to town, they're going to know what's going on if they are considering investing significant amounts of money into this project. And that's just putting a proposal together. I'm not even talking about putting a shovel in the dirt.
So what concerns me more than anything is that, from my perspective, we need to focus on this charter revision. And at this point, I don't see any reason to continue to have the Civic Center as a discussion item. It has nothing to do with this charter revision, and we need to focus our attention on educating the citizens of Troy and the businesses in Troy as to what will happen if this passes. And I think that's where our energy needs to be at this point. Councilman Henderson?
I can support it for all the reasons stated so far, but I would like a date certain after the election, should the proposal fail, to kickstart it again immediately. If it passes, certainly we have more talk that we have to engage in.
Support.
Support for that, because there's consensus to set a date after the November election to revisit the Civic Center project. Is there consensus for that?
And maybe it's revisiting it, starting a fresh discussion about what that is, making sure that those that participated in 2004 feel like we're hearing that. Those that are saying green space, that we just, we start fresh on the discussion, that we all give ourselves a chance to take a breath and get this right.
Well, the reason I'm proposing this is to suspend it at this time. I think it's debatable as to whether tactics that we may have used for this, I think that's up for debate. I think we've done a good job, quite honestly. I think there's consensus to, Councilman Baker?
There is. I still have consensus, but I, my consensus vote is not to go back to the drawing board and start over.
No, no, no.
I just want to make sure that's clear.
That's what I was saying. I'm not, I don't think we did anything wrong here.
Yeah, I just wanted to make.
Right. You've corrected. Make sure you heard me. Yes.
Okay. Okay, I think there's consensus to suspend all Civic Center activity at this time and pull back the RFQ until after the November election. I don't know what the date is on that.
It's November 7th is the election.
November 7th. Revisit it, the council meeting after November the 7th.
November 13th.
That would be the 13th. Any other council comments this evening?
Mayor?
Mayor Protem Hoderek?
This conversation has brought up, in general, the community's desire to make sure we're evaluating our green space and looking at opportunities. I think there's a misperception out there that we can tell the school board not to sell property, which we can't. That would be like us, if you wanted to sell your house, your neighbors not liking it, and us stepping in and saying, "Sorry, you can't sell your house because your neighbors like exactly how you have it in your backyard and your car in the driveway." I mean, it's just, we can't do that. But it makes me step back, and I don't think there's an answer to this question tonight, but could we be having a dialogue about where we can be looking at green space and protecting it? Are we? And what does that picture look like? I don't, and maybe others have a handle on that, I don't know, but perhaps, are there options for properties that are out there? I don't know that we've properly entertained that, and I think there's clearly a desire in the community for us to do that, and that would be a valuable conversation to have. And the answer might be, it takes public funds, and we'd have to have a whole debate about that, but I don't even know what that looks like, what the options are. Does my question make sense?
Could I just get a clarification? I was writing a little bit, but I was hearing green space, and I'm thinking a parks, a map of the city that shows all the parks. You're talking about city-owned property that's for sale, that could be for sale?
And maybe even it's looking at, what are the private properties? And are there options for a city, you know, I'm going there, is there options for a city to consider purchasing that to keep it green? And what does that look like? And how much does that cost us? And everybody's talking over their fences about it. Let's go ahead and have a fact-based conversation and understand what that looks like, I guess. And I realize, you know, bringing this here, if next meeting you have to come back for more clarification, for, I may be opening the door to more questions for you than answers. I realize this could be a, there's not going to be some quick presentation, this could be several conversations, so that's, I want to make my expectation clear.
I understand what you're saying.
Okay.
Councilman Baker?
I'm interested in what Mayor Protem Hoderek just proposed. I don't know if there's a way for, and I'm sure there is, but if it's not too painstaking of a process, for the city management to put together some kind of report that shows undeveloped parcels over X amount of size or something in our city, whether privately-owned or publicly-owned, that then could be brought to us to look at from the perspective of, you know, what can we do with that? I mean, I know our city, I think this is right, we already own over 900 acres of parkland in the city of Troy, which is a good amount of space, and it does include some golf courses, but there's a lot of animals and trees at golf courses, so.
Yeah.
You know, I know that we do own a lot of acres already, but that information is semi-really available. I'm sure it must be, but you know what's going on in our city. I don't know who that necessarily falls under, but I would be curious to see something like that. My suspicion is the city would not be in favor of spending millions of dollars to buy a private property to not develop it, but at first blush, I wouldn't be supportive of that, depending on the proposal, but it'd be interesting to see, to compare, not that you need more work to just do, but.
Yeah.
I hear what she's saying. I think that, well, we do hear it out there, especially with the school board property that we have no control over. It's the curiosity, I guess, of several of our residents.
I didn't hear it, but are we just talking about anything, or greater than two acres? I hesitate to say.
I actually, I wasn't thinking that. I don't know. I don't know. I don't even know, honestly, if the city, how many parcels, other than this parcel, does the city own that are undeveloped or more than two acres, other than the parks that exist, so.
Put a map together.
Thank you.
There's a couple of developers out there who know all the private pieces, and they won't tell. We have to find them ourselves.
Councilman Henderson?
Along those lines, this is one of the problems that we've had, you know, years prior, we've had real issues with cash flow in the city of Troy because of the downturn in the economy. We all lived through that, survived it. Things are really, really good in the city of Troy with regard to cash flow. But that also presents us as a body with some huge issues in that every developer around sees these nice pieces of property that families have sat on for decades, and all of a sudden they become really, really profitable for them to build on. And as a body, we can't tell somebody that, no, you can't sell your property that you owned for 30 years, to somebody to do something that they want to do with it. So that's really, you know, when you look at us as the bad people that are trying to overdevelop the city, it's not really our fault. You know, we have some prime property here, it's very desirable, and people are entitled to do with their property what they want to do with it. So if you have a nice half-million-dollar house in Troy and you want to sell it, it's your, you have the ability to do that. So we have a lot of tough decisions lately to make up here, and so bear with us as we muddle through it.
Any comments from council? Next are the reports. Councilman Henderson?
So first off, I want to say thank you so much to the DPW and the Water Department for obliging me with answering about 37 questions about backflow prevention this week. I want to bring this up because they gave us a nice report on surrounding communities, and that's one of the, you know, I am a glutton for punishment on Facebook, and I field a lot of questions from citizens about various topics. And when we got our second round of backflow requests, I was in the first phase. This is my year, I get to do it again three years later. People are wondering, you know, what other communities near us have this program? Why are we doing this every three years, and so on? So I just asked some very specific questions about, you know, why do we do this? And the report came back to me, and I'm going to revise my initial thoughts on here, because I was given some new information before I stepped out here, but there's 13 communities around us that essentially don't have a program. So why is it that Troy feels obligated to enforce this every three years? So that was my initial search. The new information is Oakland County Water Resource Commission services about 10 communities that don't have a water department, so again, it balances out the numbers, so it's not 13 around us. There are 10 other communities that actually have these programs as well. So I don't know, maybe a 50-50 split of surrounding communities and us that either have a program or don't. My heartburn with it is, for example, this year, it's been so rainy, I haven't even opened my system, and I'm going to have to open it, have the backflow preventer tested, and then have it re-winterized. And so the question becomes, is three years appropriate when other cities, A, don't even have a program, or other communities have a five-year program? So what is an appropriate amount of time to have to have these done? The second one, and I'm going to, I want to preface this statement by saying that I have zero, I don't use capital sprinkling. And they are a company that spent $8,000 two or three years ago to get the training, get the education, get the equipment to be able to perform these tests, and since they were at these very simple machines, testing, and one fails, they can replace a couple O-rings, get the thing to comply, and then give a good test. And since they've repaired a handful of these things, and they're not certified plumbers, they get thrown out of the pool, they can no longer perform tests. And that gives me a little bit of heartburn as well. So I just, I wanted to just bring that, this topic up for discussion at the table and see what everybody else thought. I might be an island, but I'd be remiss if I didn't mention it.
Councilman Baker?
I'll take a step on Henderson Island. I, I'm sorry. I had some questions, too, and I appreciate the answers that were given. You know, I am president of my HOA as well, and I had 150 emails from our neighbors saying, "I feel like we just did this, why are we doing it again? What's going on?" So I appreciate the responses I've gotten to deal with those. This policy predates my time on council, and I am absolutely here to admit that I didn't follow this specific issue prior to my time on council. So I don't know if our policy that we have in place now is, I mean, is it overly strict and conservative? Can it be loosened a little bit? Is there anything we can do to? It just seems a little bit onerous to me when we look at the comparison to other cities not doing it at all. I know that the House in Lansing had proposed a bill to extend it to a 10-year testing period, and that died, I guess, or I'm not sure where that is right now. I certainly value the safety of our water here in the city, and I know we are very proud of the fact that we have good, safe, clean drinking water, and I wouldn't want to jeopardize that in any way. that in any way. Um, but if there's anyone that can give me anything further on that, I'd greatly appreciate it.
Let me start, and then Paul Trosper is here, um, who has really caused, uh, the idea of putting this, this policy together. And let me just be really brief.
Sure.
And, no, not you, me.
[laughter]
You can be brief, too. It's pretty simple. He's following state law, and I think, based on the answers to the questions, um, that's, that's been corroborated. Um, while others don't, while the state DEQ hasn't put a penalty on, I wouldn't want to be the, I wouldn't want to be the municipality that's got caught without it, and in public health and safety of safe drinking water is key. We had a presentation here by, uh, Matt.
Capsha?
Capsha.
Capsha, sorry. Um, and talked, and talked all about this. Your request, uh, today for the fail rate, you know, it looks like about a 30% fail rate. Doesn't look like it gets better. Uh, it just looks like it stays consistent, which is interesting. But it, I must admit, I think when, when Matt, um, was talking about it, it was, it was higher than what was expected.
You know, it is. And, you know, when you talk about Mr. Capsha, uh, if you look in the state's Cross Connection Control Manual, he was contributor to this. And we have a resource there that's probably one of the best in the whole state when it comes to cross connection. And, uh, he takes it very seriously. And as far as what you're asking, now, Camp, um, Councilman Henderson, about, you know, the plumbers following the state law. I mean, we wouldn't allow a plumber to go in, or, or someone that's not a licensed plumber to go in and plumb a house. And it falls under that code. That's why we're, you know, if someone's not a plumber, and that's what the code tells us that we have to do, we have to follow the code. Uh, it, the only thing I'd like to say is, if all of you have drove somewhere in the city and, and had your windows open in your car, and you smelled the fertilizer that someone's running that little machine up and down, you can smell, it smells so strong. And, uh, they're putting it out in the lawn where all that irrigation is. So if you think about it, if they put that down and then they watered it, you know, you came back and you cut that line, you drained it into a bucket, would you drink it? I wouldn't. And any way we can protect our residents from having a bad water, we're going to do it. And, and that's why when other communities aren't doing it, they really don't concern me as much as the city of Troy. I, my concern is what the residents of this city drink. And, and to the best of our ability, we're going to, uh, make sure that that's the way it is.
Thank you. Um, my two cents on it is that, um, I'm always bothered by Lansing when they, when they try to regulate us with unfunded mandates. Um, and that's, that's where I have my big concern over these types.
It makes it a struggle on us.
Right. And, um, to me, that's the bigger issue, uh, coming out of Lansing. Um, you know, if they're going to make laws and they're going to make mandates and, and then, then they ought to provide the funding for it.
I totally agree.
The, the citizens of Troy shouldn't have to pay 50 bucks to have this done, quite honestly. And maybe we should work on that. Um, and second of all, um, to Councilman Henderson's point, uh, I have a sprinkler system. Mine failed when I had it inspected the last time. Um, and I watched the plumber fix it. And I'm not a brain surgeon, but I'm very, very confident I could go up the loads the next time that's broken and, and fix that in, in a couple of seconds. And if I got a sprinkler problem, I'm not calling a plumber, I'm calling a sprinkler guy. Because that guy works on them every single day. He knows every, I don't think it's right. Um.
Yeah.
I don't think it's right. And if there's something that we can do about that, I, I, that, that irks me, too.
I can't change the law as far as.
I understand, but maybe we can. I don't know.
I understand exactly what you're saying, and, and I, I have to agree with you, uh, that they are a device that, if someone is very mechanical, can work on. But the same thing falls under the plumbing in your home.
I know, but I'm talking about this particular issue.
And, uh.
A sprink, a guy that works on sprinklers.
Now, the irrigation, they can work on any of the irrigation. It's just, they cannot work on this. It falls under the plumbing code.
I understand it.
And, yeah, and I'm, I'm obligated to follow the law.
Yeah, I know. You know. I know, I'm not, I'm not yelling at you.
Mayor, if I may, um, just as Paul mentioned, Matt Capsha is a great resource that we have a benefit of. And Matt sits on several of boards, and we can certainly give this information and, and, um, this discussion back to Matt to take back to his boards that, that our community believes that it should not necessarily have to be a licensed plumber to make these repairs. Um, the, this belongs to three different organizations that actually sits on the board that does have influence, um, on these types of things. So we'll make sure that Matt represents the city, uh, on those boards with those concerns.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Councilman Henderson?
One last follow-up. I, you know, I, I do a lot of home inspections in my line of work, and I, I choose not to use a guy that comes in and, and, uh, does radon tests if he's also the guy that sells radon remediation. I have a, that gives me a lot of indigestion because the incidence of radon detection goes way up when you use that guy. And a sprinkler guy, if, if I'm already spending 50 bucks at the end of the year for him to come and winterize my system, he can do a quick test. It's a cost savings to the people. So whatever we can do to get that message across would be great, if you could.
Mayor Protem Hoderek?
The question about three years versus five years, um, they had studies that, that indicated that this is what keeps our drinking water safer. Is the three-year, how, that threshold of years, how did that get?
We're seeing the fail rate on these devices is not really decreasing. We, we were really truthfully expecting after three years to see a decrease in failure rates. But because these devices are kind of, you know, exposed to the weather and insects and everything, we're seeing the same or more.
So you don't have a sense that that's too often to be checked?
I do not.
Okay.
I think it's cheap, you know, cheap piece of material, too.
Just a, a follow-up to that. My house was built in 1988, and I think the system went in right around that time. Mine passed with flying colors how many years later? So I, you know, I don't think, I, I get that we have a 30% fail rate, we got a 70% pass rate. So again, if you can get a guy that is just going to come out, throw the machine on and move on, it sure is a heck of a lot less expensive for somebody that's going to have somebody come out and charge him $150 extra to throw a couple of O-rings in the thing.
Councilman Baker?
I, you know, I, as I'm sitting here thinking, these, the fail rates, our water still has been the safest in the area, right? Clean and safe?
Oh, it is. And, yes.
I mean, there's no question with that. But the other thing, to your point, Mayor, this, I did some quick math, and conservatively, this is a half a million dollar mandate on our city residents over the past three years. It's been, I guess, great for some of the plumbers. So hope you's a Troy plumber. But, uh, half a million dollars this costs. That's a lot of money when you add it up, and, um, that needs to be thought about more.
I do, too. I agree.
We could buy some green space.
Thank you. Oh, Councilman Pennington, did you have?
Nah, it's all right. Couldn't see me for Ethan going.
Any other comments regarding the reports in the agenda packet? I don't see that anyone has signed up for public comment on items on or not on the agenda from members of the public outside of Troy. There is no closed session this evening, so we are adjourned. Thank you for coming tonight.